Good evening. I'd like to call the business meeting for the Florence City Council to order. Please stand.
We pray for the wisdom to make decisions that are beneficial to the people represented here, empower us to speak honestly, reflect wisely, and vote with integrity. We seek your guidance tonight. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Mrs. Wingo?
Here.
Mrs. Chambers?
Here.
Mr. Nguyen?
Here.
Mrs. Whelan?
Here.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Mrs. Cable?
Present.
We have a quorum. We have the minutes of the business meeting, February 11th, 2025, for approval. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Ms. Whelan?
Second.
Second, Ms. Wingo. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we would like to call on Chief Mallory for some special recognition.
Honor two officers. Officer Jacob Sander with the Florence Police Department and Sergeant John Ball with the Boone County Sheriff's Office. If you guys please come up, please. We're here to honor them with a Medal of Valor Award for their actions on January 12th, 2025. I'd also like to ask Colonel Les Hill for the Boone County Sheriff's Office to come up and help me present the medals, please. Thanks, sir. The Medal of Valor is to be awarded to an officer for exceptional bravery at imminent risk of serious bodily injury. The recipient demonstrating exceptional courage by performing a voluntary course of action in an extremely dangerous situation. These are the medals and a uniform pin that we'll present to the officers now. Real quick, I'd just like to read the certificates. On the evening of January 12th, 2025, Officer Sander responded to a woman calling for help after falling through the ice while attempting to rescue her dogs on a partially frozen pond. Stranded about 100 feet from the shore and suffering from extreme cold and exhaustion, she was unable to escape. Without hesitation and with complete disregard for his own safety, Officer Sander crawled across the ice to reach her to keep her head above water. As the ice began to break beneath him, Sergeant Ball arrived, grabbed hold of Officer Sander, and assisted in pulling the woman from the water before dragging her to safety. Their swift and courageous action undoubtedly saved a life. By placing themselves at imminent risk of serious injury, Officer Sander and Sergeant Ball demonstrated exceptional bravery and selflessness, setting a true example for law enforcement profession. So please join us in congratulating Sergeant Ball and Officer Sander. Finally, we are grateful to have Kristen Barberie, the young lady that Officer Sander and Sergeant Ball rescued, and attended with us tonight, her and her family. Would you please stand? Thank you all for coming. I appreciate it.
I'll just let you all do it. I'll just let you do it. I think I understand how pets can be part of the family, and you wouldn't want to see them, anything happen to them. So I can understand trying to save your pets, and I'm glad that our officers and the deputy was there to help save you as well. I'm glad you're here. Thank you all to the police family for coming here tonight as well to support your fellow officers. Next, we will have a presentation from World of Golf manager Ralph Landrum.
Mayor, if I may introduce Ralph.
Jason wants to go ahead and introduce.
Sure. So we have with us Ralph Landrum from World of Golf. Most of you probably know Ralph. I got to meet him a couple of months ago when I started. Did not realize, you know, growing up, that World of Golf was part of the city of Florence. I have very fond memories growing up playing golf at the course. So I wanted to bring in Ralph today, this evening, to talk about the spectacular year that the course has had in terms of, you know, their financial success and what they've done. And wanted to bring in Amanda and Madeline as well and have them share some of the highlights and also talk the way ahead for the course. So without further ado, Ralph Landrum.
It's okay if I turn this around. Okay, first off, thanks for having me. It's been several years since I've been here. I think I told you this the last time. I started working there when I was 15. I've been there all but maybe five or six years at that time, and that's a long time ago, I promise you. So thanks, because I've been able to keep my family here in Northern Kentucky where we're from, and I truly appreciate that. It's very nice, and it's also, you know, Amanda and Madeline are here with me tonight, and we care. We take great pride in what we do, and without your all's support, we couldn't do that. So that, so why are we here tonight? We're going to go over a couple of things we do in for the community, kind of review our finances for the year, and let you know a couple of things we need that we need to improve our service and keep things growing and revenues going. So that's why we're here. The first thing we'll talk about, we'll brag on ourselves a little bit, some of the things we do for the community. PGA Hope's a program where we have four sessions. We'll probably have, oh, I don't know, 125 to 150 vets this year. They come, it's a six, there's four six-week sessions. They come out, we provide them some instruction if they want it. They get to play golf, including the carts. And the PGA of Americas, through their PGA Reach, they reimburse World of Golf for all their expenses. Unfortunately, I got a call about two hours ago just saying funding might be drying up, but we'll raise some money and get that. So the vets, we just finished one last week on the indoor simulators. We've all been through the training, and our job is really just to make them feel comfortable. If they want a little help with their golf game, that's one thing, but I think each year we give away four, five sets, six sets of clubs if people don't have them. Now, all we do is send out an email to our, you know, to our database and say, hey, we got some people need some clubs, and they show up every time. So that's a nice program we do each year. The next one is the Northern Kentucky Special Olympics. Mark Staggs and his wife Debbie, they really run that and organize that. They've been coming up for as long as I can remember. The only thing we really do there, we provide them a facility to do it. Over the past, we've had a few of my staff help them out and give some instruction. We give them a discount. They come up and play at all different kinds of times now, and they always bring a, I guess, a chaperone with them, a teammate or whatnot. So, but we supply the facility, but really that's Mark and his wife Debbie. Mark and I went to high school together. So next thing up there is on the next page, this is pretty cool. We started doing this about, I guess, six, seven years ago. It's something we figured out we'd get back. So I started a deal if they brought, they brought a code in, a kid's code in. I give them a 30-minute, a voucher for a 30-minute free golf lesson during the year. Amanda and Madeline jumped in on that. They also do the same now. This year, we passed over 1,000 codes. Typically, we take them all over to Florence Elementary, but this year I had a contact with a charity down in Asheville and the problems they have, and we donated half of them, just like three or four years ago in Western Kentucky, Mayfield had all those issues. We donated half of them that year over down to Mayfield, Kentucky. PGA Junior League is kind of a little league of golf. We host that. There's a couple of places here in Northern Kentucky to host it. Why'd I bring that up? I think we're one of the top places in the state, I know we are, for the kids get scholarships. Kids who can't afford it, maybe don't have clubs. If a parent's a veteran, they get a discount through that, and I'm really proud to say that the Junior League, again, it's part of the PGA Reach's foundation, and they do reimburse us for, oh, I don't know, probably 15 kids every year, maybe 20 kids, something of that nature. So that's a nice little program we have. They come on Sundays during one of our quieter times, and the best part about that is we run out of golf carts because all the parents are in there to watch and ride around, and so that's a good, that's, we've done that for quite a while. Our next program is the LPGA Girls Golf Program. We have one of the largest in the country, and because of that, they, I was the only guy, only male who was on the national LPGA Girls Golf, what do they call me, Expert Committee or something silly like that. They come 10 weeks and only cost the girls $60. My idea of junior golf is what I grew up in is throw some balls down and have the kids beat balls for an hour, but that doesn't work, and that's where Madeline, Amanda come in, and they do all kinds of crafts and get the kids around to do different programs. They have theme weeks where they show up as Hawaii or 4th of July, they show up looking like the Statue of Liberty or whatever, and it's for, there's some little girls, I mean, real little girls in there. And each, through the LPGA and our connections, they give us a, I think it's a $30 scholarship for every kid, and also Madeline was good enough to apply for a couple scholarships, a couple grants. I'll bet you we probably got $3,000 to $5,000 in grants to keep that program going and keep it the price it's at. Next is our school. Each year, we end up visiting about five different schools during the year. There's no rhyme or reason which one it is. It's one that reach out to us. I think they're, Amanda's been over at Immaculate Heart of Mary. We go in and basically give the gym teacher a break. They get a break while, we've got the equipment that's been donated to us through the Kentucky Golf Foundation. They can hit balls in the gym or whatnot. Madeline hooked up with the Boone County Library where they give some passes to the kids for mini golf who do their, I guess, special reading programs, and then also a couple of schools reached out, and we give them to their students as rewards. And then the last one is youth on course. Youth on course, we, it's supported by the Kentucky Golf Foundation. There's only, the Veu Parc Golf Course and Kenton County Golf Course, and us are the only ones at Northern Kentucky who do this. And the kids sign up online. It's a national program. They charge $5 for the kid to become a member, and then when the kid comes out and plays that, they only charges four, we only charge $4. By the way, they can take that card anywhere in the country if they're on vacation and whatnot and get, you know, there's places all over that do that, and then they reimburse this between $5 and $7 per kid, per round. Last year, we had over 1,500 rounds. I think we were the third busiest place in the state is what, again, that was part of that conversation a couple of hours ago. And you can see most every one of these are not really by our design. We just participate to help kids, a little biased here, but the golf course is a good place to hang out, and we don't mind them coming out and hanging out. So that's what all those were about. Now we get, if anybody's got any questions, please ask. Don't let me ramble on here forever. But we did have a nice year last year. You can see our revenues for '23, up on that top line, they were about 2.4 million. Last year, we got almost to 3 million. Thought we were going to make it, and unfortunately, it would have been more fun if that had a big three in front of it instead of a two. We were able to cut our expenses in the next line by, even though our revenues went up about, we cut our expenses, you can see about 200,000. And one thing I know, when Linda was here and now that Jason's here, we've had some troubles with the budget. We keep going over the budget. Well, when you keep selling more of everything, it's all got a cost of goods, and it runs that, it runs our budget up and over. But this year was a good thing we ran that budget up and over because you can see the return. We had almost a 25% return or EBITDA, which is what I try to use. And by the way, these are all in a calendar year because my contract's on a calendar year, and most everything you get from any of the golf industry magazines, reports or whatnot, they're all on a calendar year, and I know that gets a little confusing, but they are on a calendar year. So last year, we lost about a little under $40,000. This year, we, I just got these numbers a couple of days ago from Jason's. This year, we had a $711,000 increase. The bottom line there is our cash on hand. Last year was just about almost a million dollars at the end of the year, and this year it was up to 1.633. So we had a nice year. I see no, I don't think our increases are going to increase like that every year. I hope they do. But as far as the industry stuff, you see, I think they're continuing, see, continuing growth. We look back, as bad as the weather has been, January is, and I've been doing this a while at different places, and World of Golf was only the third month I've ever had for a whole calendar month where nobody played golf. We didn't have one golfer in the month of January, not zero. Yet our revenues were up about 4%, 5% for January, and they're going to be, hopefully, up a little bit. We keep having weather like this, they will be up for February. So I don't see things really changing or going away. Again, I don't want to come back next year and you say, hey, why didn't you go up 20 times, you know, whatever that is. But, you know, it should, the indications are, we should still continue to have a pretty good year.
Ralph, I would point out, in '23, you did not have everything operational. You were still correct. So the beer wall was not completely?
I think, yes. As of March of, we were open as, we got open in February of '23, everything was open. That is correct. So that is the only change. The indoor for, it was about, I think we got about the third or fourth week of February, so there was a change here.
And I think there was a little delay on the beer wall, even after?
Yeah, not too much.
Yeah.
But, you know, again, and it's one of the reasons I'm here, things change. Things really have changed. Tell some of my buddies, a couple of years ago in February, we did $1,000 in beer sales. I think that would have been '22 and '23 in February, the month of February, we did $1,000 in beer sales, and we were a seasonal place, which we're getting at. Last year, I think we sold 23,000. So when, you know, you talk about the budget changing and having to update that, who would have ever known that we didn't build the freezers big enough? We didn't build the refrigerators big enough? We, you know, I mean, who could have, who could have thunk it was what I was, I told Jason when Linda was here, you know? Who would have imagined that the driving range, the driving range, I think I put down here, check this, pardon me, the range has more than doubled in the last couple of years. So green fees went up 50% because I think more people are just coming out there and, you know, and when you say, well, that's great, yeah, but now we got to buy. Golf balls wear out twice as fast. Range tees are getting beat up because they're built for 15,000 rounds, and we play 25,000 rounds, and I think, you know, so things change, and that's one of the reasons I'm here, is that, if we can go to the next slide, thanks. And this is part of the things that was mid-November when my crew, my staff took over the food and beverage, and that's, you know, the numbers have gotten better. Why? Just for the three P reasons. People, policy and procedures, and we keep an eye on it, and we're going to, hopefully things will keep going better. The next page is where I need some help from you all, and these are just suggestions, obviously. I just, that's what I do all day, make suggestions. I don't do much. But we now have some cash, and I think that needs to, there needs, I think when we, as long as I've been World of Golf, it's always been, I think the opening line of my contract says something like I'm, I'm supposed to provide quality recreation to the citizens of Florence and the Northern Kentucky. And I don't think anybody really ever thought, well, you know, if they get over there and they break even, if they make a little bit of money, life's pretty good. We've got a nice place, it's paying for itself or whatnot, and there's a few years we did that, few years we fell a little bit short, but I don't see that, I think that's changed. I think we've got a cool place right now. I think it's going to demand, it's going to demand refreshing the place every now and then, maybe adding an attraction that fits. And that's what I'm here to ask you all for, is that, you know, we, just to help us with our communication, I would suggest that each November, we just said, the first week of November, we sit down and take a look at the finances for the year, where we stand, and quickly try to discuss what we need to do to upgrade the place, what has to be done, what, you know, needs to be done, what wants to be done. And if we do that, we need to do that in November because we need to start getting ready, because our season starts hopefully in the next month, and we're behind on a couple of things, you know? We're behind on a couple of things because we need some decisions to be made, and again, that's why we're here tonight. And I would also think it would be a good idea if we set a threshold of cash that no matter what happens, we're not going to let it fall below that, that, you know, in other words, we can't, if we're going to, this year, for instance, we have 1/6 or whatever it is, well, we don't have to spend all that, that's not what I'm saying, but we never want that, we're never going to spend any money to make it go below a million or whatever you all decide on. There should be some threshold set in there so that when we meet in November and December, we say, hey, we've got $300,000 or $40,000, or we got $50,000, whatever that number may be, and that's what we can afford to spend and keep the scene going forward without having to get, you know, come back and begging for money. So I hope you all, and, you know, no decision needs to be, I'm not looking for an answer now, but I hope you all will consider that because I think it would, whether I'm operating or whoever's operating the place, it would provide them some direction and be able to move a little quicker on their feet so we can get things done when the seasons are started. The next page is, just like any other business, we have to increase revenues. Costs are going up. You know, I see the price of eggs is a big thrill right now. Well, I can tell you, at the beginning of last year, whatever, I don't know if it's five pounds or 10 pounds, whatever it was, this, whatever the unit was of hamburger that we bought when we set our menu prices, it was at $42. Well, that was in February when we did our menu. Well, in July and August, it was up over 80, and, you know, that really eats into your profit margins, and so we have to, to maintain that place and keep it, again, I'm a little biased, I don't know if it's a better, there's a better family entertainment center in Northern Kentucky. But so how do we increase revenues? We need new carts. Our carts were, our carts were bought in 2019. By the way, in the last four years, actually, just the last four years, we've had $550,000 in revenue off those carts, and I think we had an increase, there's been a 38% increase in cart usage. So if they used to last seven years, well, they're not going to last that long anymore. They're getting more out. So one is if they could switch the next one. Jason and I have talked about this. I'm really biased toward electric carts, but I just don't see a way we can do that. We'd have to run a new electric service to the cart barn, which means we'd have to probably go through the parking lot. These new lithium batteries, they're quiet, they're cleaner, there is zero maintenance. It would cut on our payroll because right now we have to drive back and forth over to the maintenance building to gas them up. They're quieter, they're just a better experience. But you can see the, over five years, and this is right from, this is right from the cart manufacturers, the additional cost of those lithium batteries is compared to gas carts would be $33,000, and then you throw in probably another $50,000 to run new electric, and I, as much as I'd like to do that, I just don't think that's a good idea. They do, I do think we absolutely have to get GPS systems in them. If you don't know what, if you don't play golf, GPS systems are, they got like a little computer screen up around the front, it tells you how far you are from every shot, and it, but it does more than that. In the back office, like we can put a markup, like the fourth and fifth hole at World of Golf are really hilly, well, we can put a line around there where they can't get off the golf carts. If they can't get off the path, if they get off the path, the cart's going to shut down in just a few seconds. Or like probably for the next six weeks, they can't get off the car paths, it's too muddy. So, you know, we can put geo fences around each of the car paths, and again, if they get off, they get bad. We can warn people about bad weather coming in, they can order food off of these GPS systems. And I will tell you, there's a little bit of cost in them, not great, but you can charge an extra buck, which means you're going to actually make a profit on them, sort of the other, like AJ Jolly does out of Campbell County. But on the driving range, we have the same golf balls we've always used, the same targets we've always used, and the same mats we've always used. Now, we do have a shelter, but we don't do that much business this time of year. We do have heaters. But the driving range went up two, two and a half, three times over the last few years, and the only difference is, is the technology. People are really in it. They can play the music on their stuff. So the GPS systems, I think, are something, again, that would be a little bit of attraction and would draw the younger clientele that we need to get out to. We're still, we still don't get that, we do inside on the simulators, but we still, we're still missing that 25- to 45-year-old person that comes out World of Golf, and that's, we need more of them. I think the GPS systems in the golf carts would do that. And by the way, the golf of the golf carts, if you look up there, would be 265,000 to get a new cart, a fleet of carts, but that number would come down because our golf carts, we'd have some trade-in value. They're worth $2,000, $3,000, maybe $100,000 between all of them, so that amount of money would, that would come down quite a bit. Any questions on the golf carts? That's a decision we need to make pretty quickly. Okay? By the way, we've always had 34. We need 38 now. Why? I think I told you a minute ago, driver, the golf course revenues, driver, the golf course is usually 25% to 30% more. We're running out. You know, I was over talking to Jason last week, and public services always come over for Yarles Parade and picked up the carts on Friday, and, you know, if we do that, and I, we lose that cart Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, well, it's not to be that big a deal. Now, I got to go out there and stand people and say, hey, we're going to be a half hour, you know, because we're running out of carts. So we need four extra carts.
So can I ask a question? You're talking about a decision needs to be made quickly about the golf carts. Was none of that included in the capital budget for the World of Golf last year?
I'm not sure about the capital budget. I don't want to comment there, but it has been on the equipment replacement list for the last five or six years. And when I looked today, I think the carts are actually on the '26 fiscal year. So I think Linda and I moved that back a year when she was still here.
So they weren't budgeted for this year?
I would say that, I would say that is probably correct. I don't want to go in there and say that exactly, but yes.
Are they in the budget?
Not for this fiscal.
Not, not for this fiscal.
So you need an answer before the fiscal year is over, in order to get them ordered?
Yeah, because it's gonna, even, yeah, even if we order them now, it's gonna take three or four months to get them in. And, you know, so I guess fiscal year starts, what, July 1? Correct. And again, that goes back to the point I made, that if we meet in November, we look at the funding, you know, we have it, we can prepare them, you know, get ready for that.
So we, we have met, just to clarify, we did meet, and, and you had proposed the golf carts, but that was after our budget cycle, which was approved in June. So I think that there, there is some additional requests you have here for covered tees, but if you could skip along to the net, do you have the net request? And these are things that we can decide as a council, if we wanna just wait, or, you know, are they life safety issues and we need to address them now? I think the thought was that we would wait until the next budget for the carts, that was kind of my understanding.
For next fiscal.
For next fiscal. But the net was
The net's priority.
A public safety, or, you know, life safety issue, so that may be something that we would want to consider moving up. So you can just talk us through that?
Sure. So the, I think they started building the facility about 15 years ago, and the net was one of the first things that go up. And they have like an eight-year warranty, so the nets, we've had sections of it blow down in storms, and the insurance has replaced it. The new net is gonna cost between $250,000 to $300,000. Now, originally, if you're just redoing the net, the netting would only be about $180. But the net, we're having, oh, a couple hundred golf balls a day that go over the right side, very few go over the back, none go over the left, because everybody slices. And the, the net needs, it, it needs to be, in my opinion, it needs to be taller on the right. Now, I don't wanna say how tall it should be, because I'm not an expert at that, and by the way, you all know this, I'm getting sued right now because of the, that there Panera Bread, which, whatever. But yeah, we need a net. And the problem with this netting, and again, it goes out to, even though it's gonna be on next year's fiscal year, a decision needs to be made pretty quickly, because there's only a couple of these companies, and there's only maybe five or six that do this around, and they need to come in and do it in November, because, you know, obviously don't wanna shut down, and that's when, October, November, when the grounds are hardest and it's firmest, they can get in there and get it. So it's, might be a five or six-month hit, you know, hit lead to, to get that net up there, to get a new net installed. And again, that thing's, depending on how many poles, 100, if it goes up to 100 foot like the back, that means a pole has to be 115 feet tall. And what these people are telling me is you have to, they ship them out of Oregon, so it's expensive to put those, those big tall poles up. And again, that means about, it's about a five or six year, excuse me, five or six months kind of leeway I would, I would, headway to do that. And the last one over here is, this should be considered to do at the same time as the netting, is this light golf, and that golf at night is becoming more and more popular. If you watch any golf on TV, they now have a new golf league that plays at night. I see social media guys, and ESPN signed it, and because there's so much of playing. But if, and, and I, I really pushed for this, the last time we, we put that net up there, but if you don't put the lights up now, it's probably gonna be 10 or 15 years till you replace the net again, and they're gonna have to do new poles that they're able to get in there without tearing everything up again. So it's kind of, they kinda need to be done at the same time, it should be, I guess absolutely have to, but they would be a lot cleaner, a lot easier. And with the cost of this, it would be maybe two years you get your money back on it. And I, making suggestions here, we have to have golf carts. We can wait till July to get those when they come in. We need a new net. I would think you'd wanna do this new nightlight golf. As far as the one we skipped over, the top, the cover, additional covered tees, the problem with that, as I have, is then we would lose our grass tee, and I don't know that we're attracting anybody new to the place. It's the same people, just more people, you just gonna have to wait as long. The nightlight golf thing would bring a completely total different person in that's normally not there. Again, we probably have the money in the bank right now to cover those expenses, even if we have to wait, you know, to July, there's gonna be more money in there unless the weather's terrible. So anybody have any questions on any of those?
Anyone have any questions?
So I guess what I'm, I'm trying to understand, you're asking us to, to agree that we need to do these things. The net wouldn't go in until October. The expense would occur in next fiscal year, but the order needs to be placed prior to the beginning of the fiscal year. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that is correct. Yes, ma'am.
So the budget we approve for next fiscal year would have the funding in it, but in order to have it here and in place by October, it would need to be ordered in this fiscal year?
Yes. Yes.
And Jason?
Same way with the golf carts.
And lights.
And, and I'm assuming the funding would, and this is something I don't know, is, would the funding be pulled from World of Golf funds?
Yes.
Yeah.
Jason, did you wanna talk through what your thought process was? Tonight, we just wanted Ralph to come and present some information.
Correct.
Weren't expecting any action on that tonight.
Not expecting action tonight. We wanna get alignment from everyone here, and also, you know, show that this is not something where, you know, the course is struggling, the course is excelling. And in order to continue to excel, as Ralph has said a couple of times, you know, we wanna keep improving things as well as improving the safety of the course. So it's kinda where the net comes in, and the new carts as well, so.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
We got the January financial statements, and under World of Golf revenues, it's all zeros.
For January?
Yep.
Yeah, I'll follow up on that. We just finished up the numbers, the finals for January, so we'll come back and I'll get you a revised copy of the, the financials for January.
And I think it's important for the, the newer people on council to realize that part of the reason the golf course revenues are good is because we no longer have a debt service there. So the city paid off the debt, the money that they borrowed in order to buy the golf course many years ago, and the debt was paid off four years ago, three years ago?
At least, yes.
So there's, the revenues, that helps the revenue side.
Well, correct, and that's why I use
Or at least the expense.
That's why I use that evident number, because, you know, that doesn't
Right.
Include the amortization, that is correct. And that's why I put that cash number up there, because if we were ahead of debt, that cash would've
It's always good to have the debt paid off.
Yes, ma'am.
And again, yes, and that's why it goes back to, you know, some, I would suggest, create a threshold of that cash, that in case there is an emergency, we've still got enough money in there to cover everything. 'Cause things have changed.
Any questions? All right. Thank you, Ralph, for coming.
Thanks much. Appreciate it. Very nice of you to have me.
Thank you for keeping it in the, in the positive over there. And thank you, ladies, as well. Next, we have second reading of ordinance O2, 2025. It's an ordinance enacting and creating the Florence Transportation Improvement District as authorized by KRS 184.350 to 184.395. This ordinance creates the Florence Transportation Improvement District, TID, as authorized by KRS 184.350 to 184.395, and provides for the establishment of a Board of Trustees as authorized by KRS 184.353. This ordinance directs the Board of Trustees to establish bylaws for submittal to and approval by a city council. The full text of ordinance O2, 2025, and including its exhibits, is available for examination in the Office of the City Clerk of the City of Florence, Kentucky, and the Florence Government Center, 8100 Ewing Boulevard, Florence, Kentucky during regular office hours. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Ms. Wingo?
Second.
Second, Ms. Whalen. Mr. Holf, if you could please? I know we did talk about this, we had the discussion, we did have a first reading, this is a second reading, but I know that you had some additional information you wanted to share with council tonight.
I did. I just wanted to provide a, a little bit more insight. I've had a few discussions through email, and some maybe leaving out of here, so I just wanna do my best to maybe try to fill in some of those gaps, if possible, and then I'm obviously open to any questions. But I'll start with, I wish that it wasn't necessary to form a TID to have access to this opportunity, but the law requires that we do. So, and I, I think an important note is Ohio, while operated differently, has had TIDs in place now for 30 years. They can tax their communities. This doesn't have any component at all of us taxing our community to fund this specifically. You have also heard me say, on multiple occasions, as we've discussed this, is we need local control of roadways that we currently don't have control over. And the reason I say that is because it's what we do. In terms of, we have 380 streets now that are local streets. We have over 170 lane miles that we maintain every day. We perform all the inventory, all the inspections, the preventative maintenance, the replacement, and most importantly, all the planning and budgeting that goes with that whole piece. So I think it's important that council realizes that we don't get calls generally about problems on our local streets. While they do happen, where we get our calls and where the problems lay are on these roadways where we don't have control. These are your Kentucky 18s, your US 42, your state roadways. Those are the calls we get, and those are the calls we pass along to KYTC, because we don't have that current local control. And I think most of you also know that there are way more projects in this state than there is funding. It's plain and simple. I sit on these, again, I'm in these meetings quarterly, we talk about all these important projects that every community has, and we also talk about how there's no way to fund them all. So I think it's important to keep that in mind, because this creation of this TID provides us with an opportunity to do something different. I love this quote, "If you always do what you always did, then you always get what you always got." So we know what we got right now, without the TID board. What it's gonna look like in the future, you know, I don't know. I can't give you that, paint that complete picture yet, because it is so new. The other thing that had come up, and I just wanna make sure that the community and, and council also is clear about, is I did mention at one time about being the first city to do this. And I just want everyone to understand, that is not an ego-driven comment about being the first of the city, it is more about being first to the funding that's available. So right now, there's a few counties that are fighting for this money. Why not be that first city that's going after these funds? So I just wanna make sure that, that I was clear about that. The other thing is the goals. They were in the initial presentation, I've talked about them here and there, but I just wanna make sure that everyone understands, we are focusing and prioritizing on improvements to help improve safety and congestion. We are looking to enhance connectivity between major roads, neighborhoods, and commercial areas. And then we're also looking at evaluating and supporting projects that have the potential to drive economic growth and create jobs for those that wanna live, work, and play here. So, kinda my last little thing here, is do I have a magic ball of the obstacles and challenges that we're gonna face through this program, and how this whole thing's gonna play out? No. Can I sit here and say that we are gonna fix any major congestion or safety issues a year from now in Kentucky 18 or US 42? No, I can't. But what I will tell you is, what we do on a daily basis is we manage and maintain all those things I talked about on our current 380 streets, 170 lane miles. We know how to plan, we know how to budget, we know how to build streets, and we're gonna put that same effort and energy into identifying funds and trying to help where we can't currently. So I just wanna make sure everybody understands that. That's what we're, that's what's on the table here. I can't say whether or not this TID, what it's gonna look like a year or two from now, but if we do nothing, what I can say is we will get what we always got. And I can promise you what we got right now, I would hope no one at this table is, is happy with. Because I've been dealing, I'm 25 years, been working in this, this department, and not a whole lot has changed, and I'm trying to professionally lay that out in terms of what we don't have control over. If we want some control, this is just an opportunity we have in front of us to take. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have, to the degree that I can.
Anyone have any questions for Eric? Anyone have any comments? Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Wingo?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
No.
Mr. Nguyen?
Yes.
Ms. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. Cable?
No.
Mayor, motion passes 4-2.
Next, we have ordinance O3, 2025. It's an ordinance updating the traffic regulations of the City of Florence by amending ordinance O2322 relating to parking prohibitions, stop signs, speed regulations, truck traffic prohibitions, left turn prohibitions, one-way streets, and right-turn-only streets. This ordinance revises existing traffic regulations of the city to make appropriate changes to parking prohibitions, stop signs, speed limits, truck traffic prohibitions, left turn prohibitions, one-way street prohibitions, and right-turn-only authorizations. This ordinance effectively amends the existing ordinance O2322. The full text of ordinance O3, 2025, including its exhibits, is available for examination in the Office of the City Clerk, 8100 Ewing Boulevard, Florence, Kentucky during regular office hours. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Ms. Whalen? Second by Mr. Nguyen. Any discussion?
I have just a quick question.
Ms. Chambers?
So if we want to make another change to this, do we have to wait a certain period of time? Or are we able to make small changes in between? For instance, the issue that Angie brought up about her cul-de-sac, I know that Ms. Gorman has also contacted us about it. If we see a need to lower a speed limit on, say, a certain street, are we able to still do that, or do we have to wait again?
You could. Any change, we'd just have to come back and go through this exact same process. There is no limit in terms of how often we need to do it, but we have to do it in order for it to be enforced by our police department.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Wingo?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Nguyen?
Yes.
Ms. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. Cable?
Yes.
Mayor, motion passes 6-0.
Next is ordinance O4, 2025, an ordinance of the City of Florence, Kentucky, establishing procedures and regulations for declaring and managing snow emergencies within the city. This ordinance establishes new regulations for declaring and managing snow emergencies within the city. The ordinance provides for publication and notification to the general public regarding snow emergencies. This ordinance effectively repeals all previous procedures and regulations set forth in ordinance number O3793 enacted on November 23, 1993, which directly relates to snow emergencies. All other aspects of ordinance O485 and ordinance number O3793 shall remain in full force and effect. The full text of ordinance O4, 2025, including its exhibits, is available for examination in the Office of the City Clerk of the City of Florence, Kentucky, and the Florence Government Center, 8100 Ewing Boulevard during regular office hours. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Mr. Schneider, second by Ms. Wingo. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Wingo?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Nguyen?
Yes.
Ms. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. Cable?
Yes.
Mayor, motion passes 6-0.
Next, we have the first reading of ordinance O5, 2025. It's an ordinance adopting and approving, one, a zoning map amendment from suburban residential, one, and Office Two to Commercial Services, C3, for an approximate 1.56-acre lot located at 8109 to 8113 US 42, Florence, Kentucky. And two, to a change of concept development plan for an approximate .3-acre portion of the approximate 1.56-acre lot located at 8109 to 8113 US 42, Florence, Kentucky. And three, a variance reducing the buffer yard with the, along the easternmost boundary line from the 10 feet to 3 feet to allow for the development of a 510-square-foot drive-through-only coffee shop and a 280-square-foot remote storage cooler accessory structure. This is Brew Team Kentucky LLC. The effect of this ordinance is to allow, one, a zoning map amendment from suburban residential, one, and Office Two residential, one, and office two to commercial services, three, for an approximate 1.58, 56 acre lot located at 8109, 81 to 8113 US 42 Florence, Kentucky; two, a change of concept development plan for an approximate .3 acre portion of the lot, 1.56 acre lot located at 8109 to 8113 US 42 Florence, Kentucky; and, three, a variance reducing the buffer yard with the, along, with, along the easternmost boundary line from 10 feet to 3 feet to allow for the development of a 510 square foot drive-through-only coffee shop and a 280 square foot remote storage cooler accessory structure. The full text of ordinance O-5, 2025, including its exhibits, is available for examination in the office of the City Clerk of the City of Florence, Kentucky, 8100 Ewing Boulevard during regular office hours. Is there a motion to approve? Ms. Wingo?
Second.
Second, Mr. Nguyen. Any discussion?
I guess I do, in reference to, I mean, reading this and Ms. Chambers' concern about the traffic, can I get a little bit more clarification on that?
Sure. Todd, you around here? You can come on up, but I'll, I'll start, how about that? We analyze the traffic, when I say we, the city engineer, the Ochs and the Ochs analyze the traffic and its impacts to both US 42 and the Cresta Drive. When you're analyzing impacts, you're not only looking at the existing, you know, traffic patterns, you look at future growth projections as well. The city engineer analyzed it, signed off on it. There's nothing that's really going to impact La Cresta or US 42 based off this use category.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Wingo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Nguyen?
Yes.
Mrs. Whelan?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mrs. Cable?
Yes.
Mayor motion passes 6-0.
Next, we have a first reading of O-6, 2025. This is an ordinance adopting and approving a change of concept development plan in a commercial services plan development, C3 PD district, for an approximate .88 acre area located at 45 Cavalier Boulevard, to allow the existing building to be used for life learning skills, daycare, medical office, and other associated uses. This is the Connection Skills for Life Incorporated project. The effect of this ordinance is to allow a change of concept development plan in commercial services plan development, C3 PD district, for an approximate 0.88 acre located at 45 Cavalier Boulevard, Florence, Kentucky, to allow the existing building to be used for life learning skills, daycare, medical, office, and other associated uses. The full text of ordinance O-6, 2025, including its exhibits, is available for examination in the office of the City Clerk of the City of Florence, Kentucky, 8100 Ewing Boulevard, Florence, Kentucky during regular office hours. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Schneider, second by Mr. Nguyen. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Wingo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Nguyen?
Yes.
Mrs. Whelan?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mrs. Cable?
Yes.
Mayor motion passes 6-0.
Next, we have for your consideration, ordinance O-7, 2025. This is a first reading. It's an ordinance adopting and approving a change of concept development plan in an office two, commercial two, plan development, Houston Donaldson Study Corridor Overlay. It's an O-2, C2 PD HDO district for an approximate 0.16 acre portion of the approximate 22.48 acre lot located at 4990 Houston Road, Florence, Kentucky, to allow for the expansion of electrical vehicle charging stations. And this is Meyer. The effect of this ordinance is to allow a change of concept development plan in an office two, commercial two, plan development, Houston Donaldson Study Corridor Overlay district for an approximate 0.16 acre portion of the approximate 22.48 acre lot located at 4990 Houston Road, Florence, Kentucky, to allow for the expansion of electrical vehicle charging stations. The full text of ordinance O-7, 2025, including its exhibits, is available in the office of the City Clerk, City of Florence, Kentucky, 8100 Ewing Boulevard, Florence, Kentucky during regular office hours. Is there a motion to approve? Ms. Wingo? Second by Mr. Nguyen. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Wingo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Nguyen?
Yes.
Mrs. Whelan?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mrs. Cable?
Yes.
Mayor motion passes 6-0.
For the mayor's report, just want to encourage everyone to come to our Books and Bottles event this Friday, February 28th, from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. at the Florence Nature Park Event Center at 7200 Nature Park Drive in Florence. Dive into inspiring stories and riveting mysteries with our special guest authors, Ashley DeBra, sharing her uplifting memoir, Yes, But I Still Have Joy, and Patricia McGlynn, renowned for her captivating Secret Sleuth series. Event highlights include complimentary coffee, courtesy of Caribello Coffee, delectable charcuterie board provided by Abby Charcuterie, a cash bar with a variety of delightful beverages, exciting door prizes, and opportunities for author signings. Tickets are just $15 and can be purchased via Eventbrite on our city website. Also, as part of the Book and Literacy Festival, we will feature a Saturday morning children's program, March 1st, from 10 to 12. It's also at the Florence Nature Park Event Center. This event will feature an author storytime with Brittany Thurman and Jen Spalding, puppet show by River City Puppets, and the Boone County Library will be there with their Dolly Parton Imagination Library. This event is free. We will be hosting our citywide St. Patrick's Day Scavenger Hunt from March 7th to March 17th. Throughout the city, there will be nine giant, giant Irish symbols hidden. We encourage participants to capture their journey by taking photos at each stop and emailing those photos to scavenger.hunt@florence-ky.gov. Participants that send all nine will receive a pot of gold. The Florence Police Department will hold their Police Citizens Academy beginning March 26th through May 14th. The eight-week class will be held on Wednesdays from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. The application is available on the City of Florence website. Please contact the Florence Police Department at 859-647-5420 for more information. Is there anyone on council who desires recognition?
I'd like to say something.
Miss Cable?
I think she left before I had a chance, before we did the reading, but I did want to commend her on, it is Ms. Deb Gears and Kathleen Bishop for wanting to start a life center for those with autism for ages 12 to, I believe it's 21. I've had a couple people reach out, and hopefully, bringing this to our community, we can start looking at maybe increasing the age for those that have disabilities that are a little older. So I didn't, I noticed that she had left before I had a chance to speak with her, so I just wanted to put that on the record, and hopefully I can speak with her about that later.
Thank you. Angie, that's great insight. I know Ms. Gears is very much experienced with children and learning, so hopefully this will be a very successful venture. Thank you. Anyone else on council? Leslie?
I just want to say thank you to the mayor for bringing the events that you have brought to our city to build our community up with the literacy programs and all the fun things you've brought. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Anyone else? Is there anyone in the audience that desires recognition? Could please come to the podium?
I just wanted to give a quick thank you to everybody up here, everybody who had a say in the, the lights at the skate park getting turned on. Just want to say that everybody is really looking forward to it, so. Special thank you to Eric Hall for spearheading the whole thing, and yeah, we look forward to more improvements and can't wait to see it, so.
Thank you, Alex.
Yeah, thank you, guys, really appreciate it.
You could please state your name.
My name is Bruce Kaler, and Vice Mayor Whelan, you don't know me, but I'm just part of the honor run for the last 10 years with Scott Fiker, who started the, obviously the race 10 years ago, over 10,000 runners, over $450,000 donated to Tri-State Honor Flight. And he, Scott has decided to walk away, so I am his replacement.
Welcome.
So I just wanted to come and introduce myself. This couldn't work without the City of Florence, Chief Marley, and your folks. Melissa, you were on a Teams call with me with Greg Raykamp, I don't know if you recall that or not. I met Leslie and Angie prior to the meeting, but again, I just wanted to put a face to a name. Scott did a great job with your support, and we hope to continue that support. We hope you continue that support, I should say, and I think it's in good hands, I don't know, but I've been around for 10 years. My dad was a Korean War vet.
Oh, great.
So this is passionate for me, and I know Cheryl Pop of Tri-State Honor Run, or Tri-State Honor Flight is appreciative of the money we raise for them, so. We're eight months away, but it's never too early to, to plan. I know it's a pain in the butt, excuse my language, for the City of Florence to control the streets. There's a lot of churchgoers that aren't happy with us on that Sunday morning, Myers and everybody else, but it's for a good cause. So if you're a vet and you've been on Honor Flight, or have someone in your family that's been on Honor Flight, you know it's a really, really good organization. So we plan on continuing to, our success, and we obviously couldn't do it without the City of Florence. So I'm here to introduce myself again, and thank you very much for the support over the years. So I'll see you November 9th.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
My dad was Korean War veteran as well, and veterans are very important, and I think they're, we have made the commitment to our veterans in this community on numerous occasions and numerous ways, and I hope that the veterans know that the City of Florence is very welcoming